Please take your seats. I will call the meeting to order. A work session on the fiscal year 2026 budget. I think we'll give it to Al to start.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. So, we are at the point of a budget work session on the operating budget. And so what we're going to cover today fairly briefly is the budget process, budget book, general fund revenue by category, general fund expense by category and by function, and also next steps.
Al, I'll interrupt for just a second.
Yeah.
If you don't have your budget book, it's in your box. We probably have a couple extras if someone somehow misplaced theirs. I hope not. That's something I would do.
Thank you.
Anyway, please continue.
Yes, thanks. Okay, so our budget process started way back in February with budget guidelines approved by finance. And then on March 18, we had new position additions approved by operations and policy. March 27, board work session on capital improvement plan. April 1, CIP approved by finance committee. May 22, board work session on the general fund requests. June 12, proposed budget summary distribution. June 26, board review of the proposed general fund budget. So that's where we're at. And then next up would be board review of the proposed non-general fund budgets on July 24. And also on that date, establishing the public hearing date, public hearing notice published on August 3. Finance action on grants and administrators recommended budget. 8/5, meeting might be changed to 8/12. 8/14, public hearing budget presentation. 8/28, board action on finance recommendation. As we've noted before, we added a couple work sessions, one on CIP, one on departmental requests and the operating budget. And those were generally well received by all. Okay. So today's overview is a summary. So detailed information on all funds can be found in the proposed budget document that the chair referred to. The table of contents can be used to quickly jump around to information. And the transmittal letter provides an excellent overview and summary of revenues and expenditures that we'll be reviewing today. So Jeff's going to take revenue, Keith's going to take expenditures, and we are all available for questions and discussion. So with that, Jeff.
Thanks, Al. Welcome, Jeff.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, staff. So yeah, as Al said, I'm going to be going over general fund revenues, and then Keith will do the heavy lifting with all the expense categories. So as you can see on the slide, this is our general fund sources by category. Taxes represent 58.2%, or 140, just over $148 million of the general fund budget. And you can see the other categories going around the wheel. Charges for services, 12.2%. Intergovernmental, 12.7%. Investments, interest earnings, 3.6%. Other, 3.2%. And then 10.2% transfers in, $25.8 million. Moving on to total again, you can see this three years of general fund budgets. You can see we've grown from 232 million actual in 2024 to a proposed budget of just under $255 million, which is a 6.1% increase from last year. And we're presenting a balanced budget in the general fund. Let's go into the categories a little bit more detail. You can see taxes again represents the largest portion, 148.2 million, 58% of the total, which is the projected 6.7% increase over last year. We base this on a millage the same as last year, 4.0605 operating rate millage. Taxable value is estimated at $37.4 billion for this budget, which is an increase of 4.5% in taxes from last year. We like to talk a lot about the Headley Amendment, what that does to our taxes. As you can see on this next slide, roughly $10 million reduction in annual taxes due to Headley rollback with a cumulative amount of just over $38 million due to Headley. Moving on to intergovernmental revenue, you can see it's 32.2 million projected, 12.7% of the budget, a 4% increase. Some of the items in this category, state revenue sharing is in here, 15.61 million is our estimate for that, a $308,000 increase. Liquor tax is projected at 5.8 million, no increase projected there based upon the estimates. A half of that which needs to be used for substance abuse services. Local community stabilization share, 4.55 million, $650,000 projected increase in that category. And then contributions from local units for dispatch, 1.97 million, which is up 83,000 over last year. That's what makes up the intergovernmental revenue category. Moving on to charges for services, see 31.1 million budgeted, 12.2% of the total revenues for the general fund, 2.9% increase in this category. Most of the increase in here is due to an internal cost allocation, .71 million dollar increase. The rest is slight increase in real estate transfer taxes and recording fees and some park revenue increase. This is offset by a slight reduction in other services rendered from, decrease in revenue from jail due to new FCC regulations in inmate voice and video calling rates. Those have been limited. So that will be a slight reduction in revenues from past. Moving on to investment rents and royalties, we're projecting a 3.6% of the total, just over $9 million, 13.1% increase. And that's due to our great treasurer making his additional monies into his investment account. So the feds have kept rates high now for several years. So as those rates are say high, they're allowed or able to invest in higher returning assets. So seeing better investment returns. And then other revenue, projected at $8 million, just over $8 million. It's 3.2% of the budget, 7.2% increase. Most of this is private contributions and reimbursements, which consists of $3 million from the dispatch authority and some animal shelter services there. And then reimbursements from facilities from Grand Rapids, 1.4 million for the courthouse leases over there. And then the human services, we get some reimbursements from the state of Michigan under that category. And then lastly, in revenues, transfers in, you can see 25.8 million. It's 10.2% of the budget, 6.8% proposed increase. Primary increase is 3.4 million increase from the correction and detention fund. That went from 21.5 million to 24.9 million. And then we did reduce the payback from the lodging excise tax funds so that showed a decrease from 2.75 to $1 million this year. And that's based upon all the projections in the additional contribution to the amphitheater. We promoted or promised $15 million to that. So that has taken the ability to pay back to general fund and slowed down a little bit. So that is the overview on revenues, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jeff on the revenues piece? Commissioner Bujack.
Thank you, Chair. On the revenues from taxes, that increase that we're seeing, is that related to the state equalized value going up? It seems like that increase is substantial compared to the last couple of years.
So that we've actually projected a 4.5% increase, and it's due to taxable value, not state equalized value.
Oh, that's what I meant, state taxable.
Correct, yeah. And there's a chart in the budget book.
I thought I saw that, yeah.
If you look at page 86 of your budget book, I don't know if you have it with you.
Yeah, right. And this thing, this chart is kind of like, it's taking a trend in a direction that, I don't know, looks concerning to me when you turn it this way.
Well, that's actually, I mean, you can see, so the dark blue line is the change in SEV. The lighter purple line, I guess, is the change in taxable value. You can see we've had really good increases the last several years in taxable, 7%, 8.6, 9.07, 6.3 last year. So it did decrease, but it's still, it's actually capped by inflation and then changes in, you know, new construction and then also uncapping from sales. So that's all plays into that number there. But so we're, again, saying 4.5% increase to be conservative, so.
Okay, so of all the variable that we look at, that's the one that I heard the most from, from my constituents is, you know, the taxes that they're paying. And, you know, I don't know what kind of controls we have over that. But again, that's one that I guess we want to keep an eye on.
Sure. Thank you. Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Green. Just to follow up on that, Jeff, again, the 6.7% increase in taxing revenue is after the Headley Amendment adjustment?
Correct, yes.
So on the Headley adjustment, basically looks at the global revenue that we have, not an individual taxpayer cap, but the global revenue that we receive from all of our taxation gets to a point where, under the Constitution, we're obligated to roll back our rates. So now we're down to close to 4 mils?
What was that chart? Yeah, 4.0605 is our 2025 mill rate.
So essentially, since 2016, the tax rate, our rate of taxation on our taxpayers has been going down.
Correct.
Due to that Headley Amendment being approved.
Correct.
So the more our, the more our community grows, the more value that we grow, the more the Headley reduction kicks in and reduces that tax.
Correct, and that's a permanent reduction, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you can see 7.4 million, just under 7.5 million, we would have collected additionally had there not been a Headley rollback on the general fund alone.
And against all of our dedicated millages, the total is $10 million in one year?
Correct.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Pakel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, I love the chart showing the delta between, you know, Headley Amendment versus what's actually captured. Do we have a similar comparison for state revenue sharing? Because I know that we are always at odds with the state about how much they're actually sending compared to what we're supposed to be getting. And I also have been hearing that there might be some shifts to that in the upcoming budget season. So, sort of two questions.
So there's not a table of the historical state revenue sharing in this book? It is in the financial overview document we gave you, and I don't have the page number in front of me right now. But if you want to reference that, you can see the last, I think it's four or five year history on revenue sharing. The one year will look odd because it's a nine-month budget.
Sure.
So you have to take that into account. So I think, do you have that document?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to take a look at that, and if you have additional questions after that. But yeah, the recent years, they have been increasing that, which is nice to see.
And have we been hearing anything in this upcoming budget year? I mean, you know, budget cycles all up and down right now, but.
I haven't heard of anything to revenue sharing at this point, have you, Al?
No, I think there was a slight increase.
Was there?
In play, but obviously the budget's.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any others on revenues before we move into expenditures? Then we'll have time for general question and answer as well.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, so with expenditures, we're going to start with the general fund uses by category. So general fund by category is located on page 26 of the proposed budget document, if you want to follow along in your book. Personnel is the largest category at 54.6%, followed by other services and charges at 21.7% and transfers out at 19.5%. These categories make up almost 96% of the total general fund expenditure budget. This slide here shows the total general fund expenses by category broken down by dollar amount. It also shows the change from the 25 adopted budget to the 26 proposed budget. Personnel is up 7.9% or 10.1 million. This line includes negotiated increases, personnel additions, as well as any benefit changes. Other services and charges is up 5.6% or 2.94 million. And this is primarily due to a $2 million increase in the inmate medical budget in the corrections area and a .2 million increase in the inmate food budget, .21 million increase in the drain contributions for at-large projects that the county owes. And then a .47 million increase in election contractual services, and that's due to recent changes in election law. City capital is up 14.3% or .86 million. And this is primarily due to a .56 million dollar increase in the contract for sheriff body cameras, tasers, and in-car cameras. And a .35 million dollar new item to purchase cameras for the real-time intelligence center for the sheriff division. So moving on to general fund uses by function. Function is department roll-up type category, so we'll look at each department group specifically. General fund by function is located on page 27 of the budget summary, if you're following along in your book. We'll be covering all these categories except recreation and public works. And the reason we won't cover those specifically is the departments that make up those groups specifically are just drains and parks. But the changes associated with them are outlined in the letter. For parks, you can find that on page 10. And then for drains, you can find it on page 9 in the other services and charges section. So general government is the first category here in the function group. It's up 6.6% over the 25 adopted budget. General government represents just under 20% of the total general fund. Departments that make up the most of the change are IT, clerks, policy admin, facilities, and HR. And the changes for each of these departments are explained in the letter on pages 10 and This chart here just shows the proportion of the expenses in the general government function area. Facilities, IT, and policy admin make up most of the proportion of the $50 million budget for general government. Public safety is up 8.9% over the 25 adopted budget. Public safety is around 40% of the total general fund. The departments that make up 95% of the public safety division is sheriff and corrections. And the changes for both of them are explained in the letter on page 9 under the sheriff And this just shows the proportion of the public safety group. So you can see road patrol and jail make up around 90% of the total, $102 million budget for public safety. And then judicial is up 5.7% over the 25 budget. Judicial represents just under 13% of the total general fund. The change from the 25 budget spreads somewhat evenly among the department groups. And the primary changes are explained in the letter on page 10 under the circuit court and probate court sections. And this just shows the proportion of the judicial category. So circuit court prosecutor are the largest divisions in this function. And then social services is essentially flat. It's just a 2.2% increase from the 25 adopted budget and represents 3.5% of the total general fund. The groups within the social services function are listed at the bottom of the slide. And this chart shows the proportion of the nearly $9 million budget that's allocated for social services functions. Substance abuse, Jeff alluded to that earlier, that's some funding that we get from the state that we have to distribute. And then medical examiner and mental health for the Network 180 contribution make up a large majority of the social services function. Community and economic development is decreasing compared to the 25 budget. There's just three departments in this category. You have economic development, which is increasing by 25 grand from the 25 budget. This budget supports the right place with a $225,000 contribution, as well as the Kent Conservation District, which we have budgeted a $100,000 contribution in '26. Cooperative extension is in this division, and that budget is essentially flat. And the register of deeds budget is actually decreasing due to the proposed elimination of a vacant position that's not needed any longer. And that's due to lower levels of recordings compared to previous years. And this is noted on page 10 of the letter under the clerk and register of deeds section, if you wanted to see more detail on that. This just shows the proportion of community and economic development. And then transfers out is the last area I'll cover here this morning. This category increased by 1.2% in total, so it's nearly flat. Transfers out represents 22% of the total general fund budget. The changes in transfers are explained on page 9 of the transmittal letter. And there's a list of transfers on page 26, if you want to see where these transfers out are going to. This just shows the proportion of the transfers out budget with the $56 million total. Most of the transfers out are going to childcare, the healthcare fund, as well as the CIP fund. And then before I jump into questions on expenditures here, I'll just finish with our last slide. Al kind of touched on this already, but these are just the next steps in the queue. July 24, we'll review the non-general fund budgets in a work session. At the board meeting on that date, we have to establish the date for the public hearing, which is going to be August 14. And then the finance committee will act on the budget recommendation, as well as the grant acceptance items for any grants that are included in the 2026 budget at the August 5 finance committee date. And Al said it might get moved to August 12. And then the board will have to act on the budget August 28. So with that, that's the end of our presentation. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you. I had a quick, kind of general question. I know we had this, and I don't know, Keith, this is directly for you or others, but just for the edification of the group, we had the questions in operations about the new positions. I know they're in the letter. I didn't see, I know in the past we've had the chart of the new positions. I don't know if that table is in the letter or not. I don't think I saw it in there. But I just want to know if we could go through an explanation of those positions briefly, or if we can get that to commissioners? Because I know it was in committee, for the operations committee, but I think it'd be good for the group to see that as well.
Yeah, so the chart is not in there, but the positions start on page 9 in the personnel section. We mentioned the position additions. And then each department that has a position addition is listed starting on page 9 and through page 11. So each of those groups talks about the position additions that are being added to each of those departments. So if you want to see what's being added and the reason why, you can find that detail on those pages. I don't know if that.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And just to be clear, I'm aware of it, and I've been privy to seeing it, and I've been following it, but I just wanted to clarify that for commissioners. And I know there's a nice summary in that, the meeting packet from that operations committee meeting. It might be good to just send that memo again as part of this conversation so folks can have a chance to take a look at that. Okay, others on expenditures or general questions? Commissioner Hildbrand.
Thanks, Chair. I want to take just a second and look at the debt pages, if I know. So we have to, you know, try to, this is great information, but, you know, we have to try to explain this stuff at a 30,000-foot level to our constituents at times. And so, you know, they elected us to go through these details, but, you know, when I'm at the local watering hole in Lowell, I, you know, I got to kind of explain this in layman's terms, but.
Plus after a couple beers.
Yeah. That's when I really get sharp.
No, no.
That's when I really get sharp. 62 and beyond that. But so if someone were to ask, how much debt does the county have? Like, I know in here are the funds that we pay our debt, you know, our bonds and the debt that we hold as a county. How much debt do we have as a county, roughly? I know that's probably not a simple question, but how much liability do we have as a county?
So on page 12, there's a debt paragraph, and the outstanding debt as of September 30, 2024, which was our year-end for fiscal year '24, was 564 million.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and most of that debt is all self-supported debt, which means another entity pays. So a lot of that is airport debt. DPW has some debt. The road commission has some debt. That all falls under our umbrella, the drain commissioner. I think our supported debt, direct debt, is roughly around 50 to 60 million only. So it's very, very, very low, well below our state authorized limits, so.
Great.
Which is a great watering hole conversation that we have. The state would allow 10% of SEV, and we're under 1%, well under 1%.
And then a follow-up. So on the capital project fund, this is sort of related, you know, obviously we have our capital, our CIP fund to potentially pay, you know, cash for some future projects. I noticed that the proposed budget actually is a 10% reduction investment in that fund. And I know in talking with a lot of my colleagues on the board, we're really interested in seeing more money put in that fund so in the future we can pay cash, more cash, and obligate less debt. So I was a little concerned to see that there was a decrease in kind of making that a priority to invest in capital project funds. I don't know if anybody can comment on that?
Yeah, I can comment on that a little bit. So in the '26 budget, the proposed transfer to the strategic capital account is 2.5 million. In 2025, it was 6 million. You can see that on the statement on page 69. And the other services and charges line item is where that budget is recorded. But the actual transfers for capital projects in 2026 went up. So in 2025, it was 8 million. And in the '26 proposed budget, we're expecting over 10 million.
Yeah, so as Keith said, last year's transfer for our CIP projects was about $2 million less. So 2 million of the amount we would have put in strategic last year went to other capital projects this year. But you also note that there's been, we typically take any lapse at the end of our fiscal year and pour that right into strategic capital. And this past year, I think we added an additional, was it $10 million, over and above what was budgeted? So again, we budgeted conservative in a lot of our sources, but at the end of the year, since I've been here, we've always been ahead of our projections. And we've brought items to commission to beef up strategic capital. And we've been able to save, I think we're around $43 million now in strategic in that fund. Is that somewhere? 43 million that we have saved for future projects, so.
This says 49.5 million fund balance in the year for CIP capital fund?
The total, the total fund balance in our capital.
So that includes other projects.
Okay, thank you.
That enough for next time you're down at the hot dog? Is that good? Yeah, okay, good. Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Green. I kind of want to follow up on some things that my colleagues have said about trying to pay cash for more things, but then also asking about the new positions. Can we, would it be possible to get like a forecast of, for our new positions that we're looking at hiring, what those would cost us over five years? Not just in the salary, but also in like our benefits? Because I know some of those positions are ones that we could forecast some of that out in terms of like union negotiations or just general pay raises? Just so we can get an idea of as we add these new positions, what it's truly costing us, not just in the next year's budget, but also what it's going to be costing us down the road, just so we can maybe reevaluate the way that we're looking at those positions?
We can do our best to protect that, yes.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. To kind of follow up on Commissioner Hildbrand's comments, I'm wondering, do we have continued plans for the next few years to continue to beef up our capital so that we can continue to pay more in cash, especially considering we've got some huge projects down the pipeline, like the Fuller campus? And how are we planning to fund some of those when our strategic capital is not sufficient enough to cover that? I mean, are we gonna, I suppose we'd take a bond, but how can we ensure that we pay as much cash as possible?
So I think we've done pretty well over the last six years or so in paying cash for projects. If you look at the Fleet Services Building, that was all cash. If you look at the Parks Facility, that was cash. Also, the North Campus Services Building was cash. So one reason we're rebuilding is because we've been paying for things with cash. And typically, we And typically, we pay for the larger ticket items with a blend of strategic capital and with bonding. And so when you look at the Fuller Campus Project, that's huge. And while we want to pay as much as we can with cash, with the timing of when that's going to happen, with where we're at, we had initially planned on spending forty million from strategic capital and the balance from bonding. And of course, we're relooking at all that finance with the latest option, you know, that we've been reviewing. So I think that certainly Kent County's had, I think, a long-term ethic of paying for everything that it can with cash and reducing the number of bonds that we do for projects. So was that an answer?
I guess to follow up on that, what is our plan? Are we going to continue to increase the strategic capital over the next few years? Is, are we going to?
Yes. And so I should also say that the way we've done budgeting long-term in Kent County is that departments have not only been encouraged to end the year with money in the budget and not rush to spend it at the end of the year, but they have been really true to that task. And so in almost every single year, we put additional money into strategic capital at the end of the budget year. And so, yes, we would anticipate that that continue and that we continue building the strategic fund. It's a very, a very important piece of what we're doing.
Others? I don't have any more in line. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. So just jumping back a little to, and I know I expressed this, I think, in our work session on the capital budget, but just that chart of, Commissioner Boujek was mentioning just the increase in the SEV compared to the taxable value and how that continues to be quite a margin the last many years. And, you know, I definitely would, you know, be happy to sit down at the watering hole and talk about, you know, Hedley and, you know, his awesome amendment all those years ago. And, but my constituency aren't particularly interested in that level of detail either. And what they see is that if they're paying four hundred bucks a month in property taxes, I get that our portion is, you know, maybe eighty bucks or something. But if they're paying four hundred bucks a month, they're staring down an extra twenty bucks a month because of the five percent cap, like every single year, you know? It's been happening the last few years. It's going to be happening, you know, all these future years as far as we can predict based on that kind of chart there. And so that, you know, some people, you know, their family budgets, you know, that twenty bucks a month, they're not going to miss it. Other people, it's a major, major problem. And suddenly, you know, they can't send their kid to summer camp or, you know, whatever. And so that continues to be, you know, a growing concern of just the tax burden going up and up and up on people in Kent County. That being said, I get that our portion of it is, is not even the majority of that cost to constituents of the property tax budget. But I do, I do think, I want to echo some of the previous comments on just ensuring, like, we're putting as much money as possible into capital needs. I know that, it's not in the book, I don't think, but that great chart that Jeff provided a couple of weeks ago on the next five, six years and the two-hundred-and-sixty-some million dollars in capital needs on a lot of these major, major county projects, that as we're looking at that and need to be putting, you know, more and more away. I, I think, after the capital conversation, so I'm just looking at page seventy here, like, I know that this is, in a sense, like the strategic capital, two-point-five million, is in a sense a floor, like that's the minimum we'll put into strategic capital. And prior years is the, as the guide of, you know, we put more than that when the numbers, you know, work out at the end of the year. I had thought we were going to make the floor somewhere more around three million. I'm just curious why, why we didn't, if we think that there's going to be such a significant margin of additional capital to put into that fund, why not increase kind of the commitment to that minimum amount?
Good question, Commissioner. So I don't recall a conversation where we ever set a minimum that we were going to send to strategic capital. I mean, it's all a balance, right? So we have all these interplay between funds. We transfer a lot of money in from the correction detention fund. We transfer money out for capital, and that's why we do capital the way we do it, so everyone's competing on the same level. So in the end, you got to make the budget balance, right, without any use of fund balance? So when we got done this year, that's where the, that's where the number fell, basically. Anything we have extra, overall, the anticipated expenses and other capital charges. Again, if we had kept the capital down to the eight million figure from last year, that number would be around four and a half million dollars this year. So this year, it just happened to be more additional capital projects that we needed, so we put more money to that specific projects as opposed to strategic capital. So every year, it varies a little bit. We don't have a minimum set policy for that number that I'm aware of, but we try to maximize it whenever we can. For CIP, yeah, point-two mil minimal for CIP. And we were almost to point-three mil this year on CIP, so over and above what we would typically send. But they're all good products that got, that had to get approved too. So I don't know if that answered your question, but.
It does. And I think the CIP this year, the approved projects, that seems to be, to me, to be a good mix. I just personally feel like we should be, given the fairly near-term two-hundred-and-sixty million in capital needs, to Commissioner DeBoer's comment on making sure we can pay as much as possible of that in cash, I think we should increase the number, the minimum number we're putting into that strategic capital. So that's, that's my thinking on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others? Yeah, Commissioner Halsted.
So I'm new, and I'm still learning to read all of these. So is there an actual statement that talks about the strategic capital and what goes into it and comes out of it?
It's just its own separate account in our accounting system. It's just set up as a separate project, but there isn't a financial statement necessarily that we have for presentations.
Commissioner, are you good? Commissioner Halsted?
I think so.
Okay. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair Green. I have a question on page fifty-four. Just looking at the KCCA's other revenue for two thousand and twenty-six. There's almost a fifty percent increase, but other revenue is kind of vague, so I was just wondering where that was coming from.
That's a good question.
Especially for a significant increase like that.
I don't know off the top of my head what that would specifically be related to.
I believe that's reimbursements from DTE and consumers resulting from weatherization work.
Lovely, thank you.
Others for questions? Commissioner Stack.
Oops, I had my mic on the whole time. I hope I didn't say anything.
On the record.
In the, in the past year or so, we've made a number of decisions to substantially enhance public safety staffing. And I noticed that the public safety budget goes up eight-point-nine percent over the last year. Does that account for all of the phases of that staffing? Or are there subsequent years yet to absorb additional staffing? I know we make the commitment, but, but the plan is that we'll staff out.
From my understanding, that includes all the phases. In the twenty-six budget, the last phase that we incorporated here was in twenty-twenty-five. There were fourteen road patrol officer positions approved, but only half of them were funded in twenty-twenty-five. So in twenty-twenty-six, we have full funding for all fourteen of those positions.
I see the sheriff shaking her head, so I don't know if it'd be appropriate for you to come up, Sheriff, if you'd like to.
For the record, which way was she shaking her head?
Well, first, one way, and then the other way, but I think, I think we're a little, we've got our wires crossed here, so.
Why don't I start and then have the sheriff pick it up? All right. So the studies that were done of road patrol and corrections are really multi-year bigger than what we've implemented so far. What we did was to take care of the immediate need in the jail and then also the road. But this is something that will be implemented over a period of years, and it really was an over-encompassing kind of study, that there's a lot more to do.
Well, that was my impression, is that we were looking at multi-years, but we had a couple of larger step increases that are included in this.
Correct.
So just to put it in perspective, the staffing study, so in this moment in time for law enforcement, asked for about thirty additional positions. Fourteen of them were accommodated. We are trying to implement some technology. We're hoping that would cause us not to have to get to the additional, all of the additional. We absolutely will have to do additional spots for law enforcement. For corrections, the initial gap was identified as twenty to get to a place where we were no longer backfilling with an inordinate amount of overtime. The additional positions were in the neighborhood of forty-eight, additional beyond that. So we've not even started that forty-eight. So there, I wouldn't even categorize this as halfway through the projected growth that both of those studies alluded to.
Okay. So when I kind of do this forty-thousand-foot look, I see that the overall revenue from taxes increased six point, what was it, six-point-seven percent. The general counter administration went up a little bit less than that, but public safety went up about eight-point-nine percent. So it's a bit of a rebalancing here, shifting the overall balance of revenues to public safety. And I guess I'm following up on Commissioner DeBoer a little bit about, where is this going to take us in the subsequent years? Or maybe, I'm sorry, Commissioner Teal raised that question. Where is this going to take us in subsequent years as we look at it? Is it going to be, again, a nine percent increase that we're going to be looking at in order to continue down that road? Or are those decisions basically up every year to decide what we can do?
If we're talking specifically about the road patrol and the jail staffing-
Well, those are the big ones, I know.
Those are the big ones. So it's, we're basically working at a pace that I think everybody has been comfortable with. The sheriff has noted previously that there's only so many positions that could be added with just the, with the number of people leaving due to retirement, the number of people coming in. So there's a pace to be maintained. But getting back to what Commissioner Teal was suggesting too, I mean, we can do projections of what that cost is, because it's basically the cost of the whole, an individual department, depending on their individual union contract, or with non-union, you know, we can look into the crystal ball and try to determine what that looks like. I don't know that any of us would have looked into the crystal ball and realized what happened after the Great Recession with the Great Resignation and all those sorts of things. But yeah, we can, we can certainly do some forecasting and give you the very best look that we can come up with as far as what we think that future can look like. But certainly, costs aren't going down. And so, yeah.
Again, looking at personnel overall, that's a seven-point-nine percent increase over that year. That includes the sheriff's department, which is, it sounds like the bulk of the additional staffing is coming out of the sheriff's department. So we don't have the benefit of the federal government of just printing money when we need it. So if we are going to fulfill that future, there's less money available to put into our strategic capital. I mean, that seems like the equation.
You know, it's interesting, but it is kind of a yearly look, because, you know, we are, you know, we're second maybe, but I like to say we're the fastest-growing county, because we are most years. And so right now, we do have decent revenue increases because of the amount of new construction and because of the revenue that's gained when taxes are uncapped, when a property changes hands. And as we grow, so does the need for services. And so it is all part of the same picture. One of the reasons that we undertook and want to keep perfecting the discretionary services ranking and then also the mandated services without, that mandated services study that doesn't have mandated service levels, is that we may get to that point where the board needs to decide, do you not want to do something? And so in order to accommodate growth in other areas. And so to me, that is a very, very important role of the county board to kind of decide the what. I mean, the department heads, elected officials, I mean, I'm tasked under the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act to talk to them and figure out what they believe is necessary to run their area. You know, we have negotiations, we bring you a recommended budget. But in a few positions here or there is just at the fringe. Ultimately, the real conversation has to be, what is it, what is it that, as a county, the board wants to do? To me, that's a great level for the discussion, because at that point, you're not really just picking away here, here, and here, and maybe hampering the ability to deliver a certain service at an excellent level. And so I would, I hope that we continue with the rankings and perfecting that system every year, because at some point, you know, when, if cost gets to the point where the board is seriously concerned about how we are paying for services, then it may be that some things have to go.
So if we want all of the staffing in the public safety we want, we want to increase strategic capital and reduce the taxes for our taxpayers. You could do that for us?
Great question. But I think everything, everything is contingent, really, on the revenue growth we've seen. And I haven't seen any indicators that we're going to see any, I mean, we lead the state in population growth. We lead the state many times in new jobs, and so there's just a huge amount of desire to be here. So we've been very fortunate. I mean, there's many counties in Michigan that really haven't recovered from the Great Recession yet. And yet, we recovered about twenty-seventeen or eighteen, or somewhere in there, to where our revenue actually went above what it had been. And it's really the growth that's fueling both the need and providing the funds for us to get by doing what we're doing. But, yeah.
Others? Commissioner Boujek.
Thank you, Chair. There are a couple, two parts here. I want to go back to my first question. So when I showed this chart here and this growth, I didn't relate this other chart here that shows the drop in the actual milage rate that's applied to the taxes. Where did you get that chart that you brought up? Where did that, is that in here somewhere? Somebody brought it-
The chart that we showed at a different meeting?
No. When I asked the question, where did that come from?
The table's in there for sure. I don't know if there's a chart.
Are you talking the Hedley Reduction?
Yeah, you showed, you brought a chart up and said, uh-
That is not in the book. That is in our presentation.
It was the table.
So you went, you went to some table somewhere and brought that up so we could look at it?
Right here.
Oh, yeah. And where is that?
That's in our presentation today. It's not in the budget book.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. So my second question has to do with personnel by fund, which is on page eighty-eight. We created a indigent defense fund in a department with significant number of employees in that department. And yet, on page eighty-nine, we don't show personnel by department, a department for indigent defense. And it looks like it's actually shown under the Parks Department. I'm like, why, why would the Parks Department show Fund Two-Sixty under their personnel?
It's under the Policy Admin Department. It can be a little confusing how it's laid out here, but indigent defense is two, Fund Two-Sixty, seventy-seven positions. And then if you look below, the total for Policy Admin, one-thirty-three. That includes the indigent defense positions. So that's just the category that those positions roll up to.
So it is in Parks?
Oh, so, okay, so the department is Policy Administration? And under Policy Administration is Medical Examiner Parks?
No, so there's-
That's very confusing.
Yep, so you have the General Fund is one-oh-one for positions, and then Two-Sixty is Indigent Defense, and Two-Eighty is Special Projects Fund. is Indigent Defense, and Two Eighty is Special Projects Fund. And those are just positions that are grouped into the Policy Admin area. So like, for example, the Board of Commissioners is within the General Fund group, so twenty-one of the positions or so are within the one oh one category at fifty-three point seven.
Okay, so there's no separate department for indigent defense?
No, not, not in this roll-up. They are in their own separate fund, so they're, they're split that way by fund.
Part of the confusion may be the title's at the bottom, so you can see Policy Administration is made up of the three lines above it.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't make sense, but it, but understood.
So it's not Parks down, it's Policy up?
To the CPAs.
Yeah, I guess that's what's confusing.
Okay, so maybe we can switch that next year and make the heading before the numbers? Yeah, but I see your confusion there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DeBord.
Thank you Chair. So just, I noticed this quickly looking at this Headley amendment. Our, our, our tax, our operating mileage didn't decrease in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, but it did in other millages, and I find that confusing. Why is that the case?
I think during those years, and I might have to confirm this, we weren't at our max, I believe, so it wasn't, we didn't have to roll it back, but then we, then we, I believe got below it, but let me confirm that, I believe that's what it was in those years.
So we unlevied mileage in those years?
We didn't unlevee, I, I think there was room in our gap. Let's, let's say, for instance, we, we could have gone up to like four point three, so those first years, we were above the four point three, so we didn't have to roll back the General Fund, I believe is what happened in those. But the other millages were already at their top, so there was no room, so those were required to be rolled back. If that makes sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, but it just seems odd that we wouldn't have levied as much as we could have, just knowing us a little bit, but...
Others? Commissioner Morse.
Thank you Chair. My question is going to be very fifty thousand foot view. In reading through, this is an amazing document, very thorough, something kind of going back to the watering hole comment. Is it possible to provide commissioners with information, some type of documents, and I think of it like a social media post, amount of information, something, snapshots that we could take so that when we are at the watering hole or leaving a meeting, or something that we can use to communicate on a very basic level, things that are going on in the county, whether it be the budget forecasted or other general county matters, is there, is there budget information available that we could use for those types of purposes?
We can put that together, yes. We've had that conversation, I've talked to the chair about this and other commissioners as far as providing snapshots or one-pagers or that type of thing that commissioners can use as they see fit.
I think that would be pretty important, thinking that, speaking to, you know, the board goals about being transparent and clear, there's opportunity that we can help pass along that information, but in a, a much simpler version than a document like this, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Pakla.
Yeah, thank you Chair, and...
Real quick Chair, sorry, there is during the public hearing presentation, that I will provide during that public hearing, it does summarize things pretty well for the public, and we try to include more graphs, things like that too, so that's still forthcoming.
And following up on that, actually, I, I think, I was doing some notebook math, I don't have an envelope, so it's not back at the envelope, but thinking through that public-facing aspect of information, there might be some key data points that would be really resonating for the public. You know, an example I can give is, so as we look at the total taxes that were levied for the General Fund, we have two hundred forty-one million, seven hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars is what's in the book. That's an average per person in the county of somewhere around three hundred and sixty-five dollars per person per year, right? Just strictly take that number divided by six hundred and sixty, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, right? Not household per person. But when you look at what our actual operating expenses are in the General Fund, it's more than that, it ends up being about three hundred and eighty-five dollars per person per year, right? So I, I often think about government budgets and taxes and revenues and expenditures as what are we putting into the system and what are we getting out of the system, right? Every time we have state funds that come back to us or federal funds that come back to us, those are our tax dollars coming back into our community to work for us. The same argument can be made here in the General Fund at the county is what are we putting into the system, and what are we as residents getting out of the system? And that's a really resonating data point for a lot of folks because we can see that even though every person in the county is paying in three hundred and sixty-five dollars per person on average per year, because of the entity of the county government and the successes that we have in leveraging other funds and the other sources of revenue that we have, we get out three hundred and eighty-five dollars per person per year. So it's not a huge difference, but it is something that says you wouldn't get these services in the same way if we didn't have this operating system of county government.
Good point. Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you Chair. So the, this is a great, great conversation, and it's got me thinking about kind of some of these long-term costs, and just not looking at, you know, next year's budget, but, you know, the next five years. So a couple of questions on that. One, Commissioner Stack was bringing up the, the public safety needs that we're planning to fund, you know, some portion of the additional needs there in this budget, and then the impact of future years. That brought to my mind the, the question of, so I think we've accounted for that on, which I, I think is very necessary, growing population, you know, to some extent, you know, just growing crime rate and other, you know, incidents that the sheriff's department has to deal with, especially, you know, as the areas outside of the cities, you know, grow substantially. So, and then the, the other sides of the kind of equation there are the indigent defense, which I think we've accounted for in some of the increases as we pulled that into the county, some of the increases in positions there. So the question is, have we, have we accounted for that in planning for future years for the prosecutor's office, and what impact those, those areas seem to need to stay somewhat in balance? So we are still working for this, with the state. I think the law that passed a year ago provided more positions for prosecutors' offices, and because of some problem with the language, it has to go through the House again, and I know there are several counties working on it, and that hasn't happened. So we are supporting efforts at the state level to provide more prosecutors to shore that up more closely to, you know, where the public defenders are and that sort of thing. So we haven't done it yet, there's been a lot of things that happened this year so far, both for the prosecutor and in our world too, with some of the changes coming, but we do plan to have a, a work team meet with the prosecutor to figure out kind of a scale. How do we know when it's time to add more prosecutor positions, so that we can be a little more scientific about that as well? So one answer is, we continue to advocate at the state level, there are a few more positions approved right now that the prosecutor hasn't been able to access yet, so we're trying to get that through PAA and MAC, trying to shake that loose, and continue that increased investment by the state. And then on our, more our side of the equation, we'll work to develop a formula for knowing when we need to add more. Great, and then, you know, flip, flip side, I guess the, the opposite direction question. If, so knowing that there's, you know, a lot of ongoing discussions in the federal government on next year's budget, I presume that if some substantial portion of, of funding this direct grants would, would go away, that there's, there's some amount of overhead costs that would remain part of the General Fund, so you, you can't like, you know, get rid of the point oh five percent of the HR cost, you know, just because that grant in a particular position has gone away. So for two thousand twenty-six, I presume we would just continue to absorb those kind of administrative costs in the General Fund. Would you anticipate in those future years, if that were to happen, that we would be able to reduce those administrative costs in a commensurate way with whatever reductions came from the federal government? I think that, well, every year, we recalculate the admin cost and the distribution on departments in the county, and so we continue that. It kind of depends on what it is and how much. For example, we can allocate our insurance cost. Well, if, if, let's say a department was cut, and let's say it was a thirteen million dollar department, it's unlikely to change what the overall insurance cost is at Kent County, so, or if it's a, the light bill, if I wasn't closing a building, then probably I'd have to rebalance that, and departments would pay more. But there may be other cases where we could, and that's why we look at how we allocate IT costs, and then separately admin costs every year. So the answer is maybe, and we would just have to look at the, what is actually cut and what the, what we're allocating, and then how, how does that affect it? So.
Thank you.
But it is something we're sensitive to, yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you Chair Green. I have a couple of different questions. First of all, on page eighty-eight, I see that there's Fund Two Eighty-Five and Two Eighty-Six with the same name. Could you tell me what the difference is between those two, or what's their functional difference?
Yeah, so Fund Two Eighty-Five is grants that Community Action gets that start on July one, so it's a different fiscal year than our county fiscal year, and then Two Eighty-Six are grants that start on October one.
Okay, so it's just like when they kind of like roll into the cycle?
Yeah, it's just a way to, to separate the grants by a fiscal year basis.
Okay, and then my second question, since I'm on the advisory board for KCCA, I know that one of the issues that they kind of struggle with is there's this sort of redundancy where the county gives money to AAA for senior services, which then our department has to then apply for. Is there a reason why we can't make that a bit more efficient and directly issue those funds?
I believe that the method we're using is considered to be more efficient.
Okay.
Be, by having one agency, AAA, actually be the umbrella agency, because there's other, we have the probate court, we have other parts of the county too that are part of that application process, and I believe, since, I don't recall the structure from when I was here before, but I do believe that the purpose of it was to have one body hear all requests and then make some value judgment on what the most important thing is. This, this board could decide to do it differently, but that, I think, is the reason why.
I'd like to read that sometime, but, no matter what.
Thank you Commissioner. Others, I don't have anyone in line. Are we approaching the end? I wanted to say thanks to everybody for the work that's gone into this. I, I know we've got a little, we've got work left to do on getting this across the finish line. I know there's a, a lot that goes into crafting the budget, and I know that the fiscal team, I heard once that they never stop painting the Mackinac Bridge when they finish one end of it, it's been long enough that they gotta go back and start the other end, and I feel like the budget's a little bit like that for you guys, so we appreciate the work that you do on that, and we'll look forward to the next work session. If I don't see anything else from commissioners, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is item three, public comment. Any members of the public that wish to speak? You have up to three minutes, please give us your name and address.
How you doing? I'm Dee Jones. I ain't gonna lie, I ain't gonna let up on y'all, very passionate, and I'm not a fake person, I'm Dee Jones if I'm at a gala with the Dems, if I'm anywhere with the Republicans, I'm one hundred percent Dee Jones. So, the budget, Kent County's budget, I would like you guys to pour funding into economics and community. The reason why we have violence, the reason why my friends are dying in the streets and I'm bringing to David LaGrance, real people from the streets, my friends are going to be cooking for David LaGrance. But people from the streets, real streets from Kent County, real dudes from the hood, not no, not no guy that's from some suburbs or something like that in the part of Kent Dems or some political organization, you bring them around the community to go speak to black people, I'm talking about people really from the hood. Been bringing my friends around Kent County, around the community, to speak to politicians about the violence because of one of my friends was killed in front of Billy's over a girl, it was over a girl, out of all things, a girl. She gonna be doing something with the next dudes the next day, to be honest, that's just how it goes, that's just how people are. But I'm asking you guys to pour funding, additional funding into economics, because the reason that a lot of violence, the core root of the social issues all comes down to economics. The police are locking people up and people are committing crimes because of lack of opportunity. This is the second worst city in America for African Americans, and the county has to play a part in that. The county does play a part in why we are continuously struggling, and I'm going to ask you guys to please pour funding into the community. I'm having conversations, I'm going to put this on record, because I want y'all to know that I'm serious, and regardless of your political status or what you run for, I'm going to be richer than our county one day. This is a trillion dollar conversation, and these people just hit me back up on my telegram, they're hitting me back up. This PFT, this, this cryptocurrency, I'm speaking to you guys, this is going on a, on a blockchain. This is going on a streaming platform with people that work for Nvidia. I'm doing this for Kent County, so constituents can be able to use cryptocurrency, because I don't believe in a financial banking system that the Rothschilds created that doesn't work for everyone. I'm going to be richer than all y'all, honestly. I'm going to be richer than Kent County one day. I'm going to be richer than the bosses from the blockchain, they have the Detroit blockchain, we even have a GR blockchain thing around here. I'm going to be at Stark Goddard all three hours until it's over. Speaking about economics in, in Kent County, you guys need to pour fun into economics so our community gets better. Stop pouring so much funding in the police, I'm not saying we don't need the sheriff's department or nothing, because we do, we need safety. But the reason why they have to go out and lock people up and all of that is because economics, because the lack of economic opportunity for our community. Thank you for everybody that signed, that it was seven signatures, seven politicians, I'm not going to forget you guys. And the ones that didn't, keep the same energy, I'm standing on all business, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment this morning? All right, I see none. Any Commissioner miscellaneous under item four? I see none. With that, we are adjourned.